The June 17th, 2025 special session of the Clarksville City Council is now called to order. Pastor Cal Hampton with Second Mile Church will be our chaplain of the day. Councilman Streitman will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll invite you to stand if you wish. And Pastor Cal.
Let us pray. Father, this is the day that you have made, and we rejoice and we're glad in it. Every day we get is a gift from you, Father. Help us to make the most of whatever this day holds for us, for your honor and praise and glory. I want to, just Father, before we ask you for anything, we want to thank you for everything. You've been so, so good to us. As my brother pastor Jimmy Terry used to say, Clarksville is a great place to live. And I want to thank you for our city and our county. Lord, the whole world, it seems, is coming to Clarksville these days. And with growth is a good thing, and I believe you're going to make this a great city of hope for all of its citizens. I want to also thank you, Lord, for the city council and all of our government officials and workers and servants. They do such a fantastic job for us, and we're just so grateful for them. And Mayor Pitts and his bride Cynthia, and thank you, Lord, for all the leadership that you provided. But Father, with growth comes problems, and you're the giver of every good and perfect gift which comes down from above, and we have not because we ask not, the Scripture says. So I pray, God, that you would give every one of us wisdom, wisdom from heaven. We need your wisdom, God, to do what's best for our entire city and county, and I just pray that every problem would be a small problem, and God, that you would give us the solutions for the things that we need to make this a better place to live. Thank you so much, God, for all of the work and the effort that's gone in by every one of these dear people here, and I pray that you would anoint them and bless them in the great big name of our Savior. It's in Jesus of Nazareth's name we pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
All members are present, with the exception of Councilman Chandler.
Could we get the screens fixed? Might need that later. All right. Okay, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you read the lengthy consent agenda?
Ordinance 82, 2024-25, second reading, and ordinance rescheduling the July 2025 regular session meeting of the city council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of the consent agenda. Anybody wish to be recognized on the consent agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Consent agenda is adopted. All right, members, we're now getting into the budget ordinances, first reading. We'll take them one at a time, obviously, and the first one is item A, ordinance 91, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the operating capital budgets for fiscal year 2024-25, adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2025-26 for CDE Light Ban. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 91. Anyone wish to be recognized on ordinance 91? Hearing none, seeing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 91 passes, first reading. Next item is item B, ordinance 92, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the 2024-25 budget and approving the 2025-26 annual action plan and budget, and authorizing applications for community development block grant and home investment partnership funds, as well as other programs. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 92. Any comment or question from council regarding ordinance 92? Hearing none, seeing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 92 passes first reading. Now ready for item C, ordinance 93, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024-25, and adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 25-26 for the Clarksville Gas and Water Department. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 93. Any member wish to be recognized on ordinance 93? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized on ordinance 93.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no objection, Mr. Riggins would like to come forward and explain the stormwater utility process.
Okay, without objection, Mr. Riggins. You're recognized, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Due to the apparent issues with stormwater throughout the city, multiple different areas, through many conversations with our department, Street Department, Mayor's office, and beyond, we felt the need to at least storm, to study the possible need to create a stormwater utility. It was discussed about where that would be best residing, and was all said and done in comparison with other utilities and other cities of our size throughout Tennessee and beyond who have stormwater utilities. They usually reside with the utility like myself that has either water and/or sewer. And so with that, as you can see in our budget, we proposed two things. We've had a million dollars in the budget for a stormwater study. The reason we put that amount in there, as you also know, we are currently in the process of having a study performed for a reuse study to do with sewer up toward the industrial park north side of town in that area, and that study is a year long and a half a million dollars, and that's not creating a whole new utility. So this one, we just budgeted double the amount. We think it'll take at least a year to perform that study. We have been looking, in the meantime, Carly Summers, our grants analyst, looking into what kind of grant funds are out there and available. We do know already that ARP funds are not available. We've heard that back from the state. They're not taking any new applicants, only to look to provide additional funds for existing applications. We are researching other grant options. If there's no viable option, we do have a list of a couple, one main one, but a couple of consulting engineers that we could partner with in a professional services agreement, like one, for instance, does metros. WSP does metros. They've been with them for over 30 years. They actually created their stormwater division, the rate structure and everything, so we've got plenty to choose from there. Also in the budget, we have a position for a stormwater operations division manager. The reason for that is I'm hoping to be able to get an expert in that field on staff, and they can help us drive that study. You know, we know what we know, we don't know what we don't know, but get an expert in-house, a resident expert, and let them drive that study, see what we actually need, make sure we're hitting all the parameters of this study. So the fundamental topics of the study, as you can imagine, would be to survey, inventory, and assess the existing infrastructure, whether that be ditch, miles of ditch, miles of pipe, injection wells, things of detention basins, things of that nature, what the condition they are, whether they're public versus private, whether the private ones spill over into, whether they, some of the private, whether they should be public or not. That will be looked into, need for replacement, expansion, or simply for new capital improvement projects where there's existing issues. Will also be, the study will be reviewing existing records, permits, FEMA flood maps, easements, things of that nature. Another piece that we'll be looking into, I don't know if this will be included in the study, or if it'll be something that comes later, but also modeling the capacity of the infrastructure and the functionality. We have that in gas, water, and sewer now. Again, I'm not sure if that's something that'll come with the study or after, but we'll be asking the consultant and this expert for that. After reviewing all of those and the existing issues we have, will come up, this study will also help us identify short-term, midterm, and long-term capital improvement projects for what needs to do to take care of the city. And then with all that, of course, we'll form, part of this will be forming a master plan for maintenance of existing, the capital projects altogether, replacement of existing or new projects. It'll also help us address and define the responsibilities and duties that'll shift under our purview from the Street Department. And I want to stop there and make sure I say this. What we're planning on doing, there's no negative tone or connotation to the Street Department. This is something we see is moving forward. It's a situation to where, without a dedicated funding source, I don't, in my opinion, from what I've seen in other places and what we've looked at, I don't know that they'll ever have the means to do what needs to be done, without a dedicated funding source, which this will come up with. And we've made sure to pass that information along to the employees there as well. This is no, nothing negative toward the Street Department or anything they've done in the past. So with that, and changing those responsibilities, we'll, we're look at us taking on the grading and drainage plans review, coordination with the planning commission, inspection on public and possibly private as well. As we know, there's plenty of private injection wells throughout the city, and it may be possible that the city would need to take on the inspection of those, at least so we can give those owners a report. Here's what, you know, if there's something wrong, you're either clear and good to go, or here's what's wrong, here's some options on what to do to fix this, remedy this situation, and possibly even, here's a list of contractors if they ask and need to know who do this type of work. We wouldn't tell them who they have to use, but that's a possibility. Taking over the stormwater-related GIS management, stormwater management manual, water quality erosion control manuals, things like that, including the updates for current and upcoming standards, creation or updating current policy specification, transference of the MS4 permit, and any other TDEC coordination. And then also, we'll look at, part of this would be, what staff is it going to take to take care of all this that the study has come up with? And then, and what equipment is going to take to require to run that? And the staff recruitment will be the, one of the main parts that we'll have the most influence with within the study, and that's how we handle that recruitment after the fact, and discussions with the mayor, and David Smith, and myself, and this is also what we've made sure to talk to the entire Street Department workforce about, is how we're going to handle that moving forward. And by that, what I mean is, and we met with them on June the 3rd, just to make sure they knew where we were headed. By that, I mean, if this study says you need 30 employees to take care of what the city's needs is, we would create job descriptions and post, over time, 30 positions. We're not talking, but what we want to make sure is, is everybody understands, we're not talking about anybody losing their job, we're not talking about forcing anybody to move from the Street Department over to Gas and Water. It would be posting jobs that they can apply for, and if they're the most qualified, they'll be hired. And what we believe that will do is, right now, the Street Department, I know, I don't know how many numbers, how many they have right now, I would say it's around 100. I know when I was over there for that short time as interim, I was shocked to find out they had 96 employees. They don't have enough. And as long as they're a part of the pie of all the tax base, I don't think they'll ever have enough to keep up. So what this will do, letting them keep their number of employees and let us take the stormwater part away and hire our own, now they'll be fully staffed. They can take those positions, reform those, they'll be fully staffed for the first time in decades, first time since I've been around, I can tell you that much. So, and that's how that'll be, that'll be taken care of right there. And then another part of that, just to ensure the city employees have the first shot, our plan would be to post those city, we have options when we post a job, whether we do it externally, city-only, or departmental-only. We would post those city-only first, so those at the Street Department or any other city department who possibly want to apply for that job, they would have the first shot at it before somebody out in the public. And then, after that, if we're not full at that point, then we would go out to the public to fill those positions. Then after all that tied together, we would look at finding a piece of property, hopefully on the north side of town. That way, we could do a building, a capital improvement project for a building, for offices, a shop, a warehouse, lay-down yard. This is something Gas and Water's been talking about for the future anyway, doing something on the north side of town, whether that's in the Dover Road area, anywhere between there and, say, the industrial park. We may, could have some talks with the IDB or the EDC about some different properties for that. Like I said, it's something that we would need to expand our workforce at some time in the future. If this is something we take on within the next couple of years, perfect opportunity to solve all those issues at one time. And then we could send some of our forces over there and do a good mix of those. But I want to be clear, we cannot house another division on the existing property that we have right now. And then finally, once you take all that into account, the last piece of the study would be taking all that into account to form a rate structure. And what we've seen so far, for examples with like Metro and Chattanooga and other places, is they have a rate structure where every parcel in the city, they pay a rate for stormwater utility, for stormwater service. And what that would look like, usually there's a minute, it's a tiered structure with a minimum and then a maximum. And most of the time, it's based on impervious square footage, you know, how much of their area is under rooftop, how much of it is paved, and things like that. And until the study, that's what our plans for the study are, until we hire that expert and get this study going, that's about all I have for the, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riggins. Any questions for Mr. Riggins? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, any other questions regarding ordinance 93? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 93 passes first reading. We're now ready for item D, ordinance 94, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget, adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2025-26 for the internal service funds. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 94. Any comment or question regarding ordinance 94? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 94 passes first reading. Now ready for item E, ordinance 95, 2024-25, an ordinance amending fiscal year 2024-25 budget and establishing the operating budget for fiscal year 2025-26 for the Clarksville Parking Commission, a proprietary fund. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 95. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
I have an amendment for this budget. It's in your stack of many amendments by various people. It is, on the far left-hand side, it says, let me find it, I apologize, it should say parking, enterprise fund parking enforcement officer.
Yes.
So I'd like to propose an amendment to eliminate the new position of parking enforcement officer in the amount of $56,620.
Motion been made and properly seconded, it's $53,000, according to my.
Yeah, sorry, it's what mine says also.
Okay, all right, I got you. All right, you're recognized for an explanation.
I think my air conditioner is drying out my contact lenses, sorry. So the reasoning behind this is that during the rewrite discussions of the two parking ordinances, the ones that law enforcement will enforce, and the ones that the parking authority or commission will enforce, there was discussion about what is illegal would be enforced by the police department. So the reason for adding this position in our budget document was to enforce illegal parking. And illegal parking, true legal parking, is enforced by laws, which would be conducted by the police department. So that's my supporting reason for eliminating this new position.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. Any comment or question regarding this? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I thought that the parking employees or workers still enforce illegal parking by giving tickets, because I know when I was on the parking commission, we voted when there was illegal parking, and we made the decision at that time whether they should pay the fine or not. The committee did, so I don't see why we need to do this, decrease this information. I hear what you said, but I just don't agree with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
For clarification, illegal parking is blocking the fire hydrant, blocking traffic, blocking the intersection. It's not the enforcement of the fines or fees on parking meters or metered parking.
Okay, Councilman Shakina, you're recognized.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Is there any way we can call up the Parking Commission, Michael, to explain his need for this position, or his lack of need for this position?
Okay. Any objection to Mr. Palmore? Yeah, there you are, just looking. Okay, Councilman Shakina, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, reference this proposed reduction in the budget for the Parking Commission. What is, do you feel that we need this position, or we no longer need this position? I know there's been a lot of conversation going back and forth as to whether the Parking Commission is going to, you know, somehow work with the CPD to turn this stuff over to them. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I can, and Councilperson McLaughlin is correct. When we talked about, as we move forward, we're looking at having CPD kind of take over some of this illegal parking, especially for nicer have a president's in the downtown. Now, I do agree that if we decide to move in this direction, which the code is not completely complete yet, we still have some conversations we had. If that is the direction, then I do agree, then this position is probably not needed for now. Another kind of piece of this is that this night enforcement person would also be overseeing any event parking. So when we get into the side of events, when, which is part of the rewrite, this person could also then oversee the lots of things that people are required to pay. So, but of right now, I do agree that during the rewrite, that is not needed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Smith for Mr. Palmore, or for the sponsor?
Yes, sir.
What are you saying, we need this position, or we don't?
As of now, no. If the code is approved the way, yeah.
We don't need it right now. Okay. And how would it affect you decreasing these funds?
It won't affect, because we're currently not doing night enforcement, so it's additional enforcement to the department.
Okay, thank you, the clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment or question for Mr. Palmore? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Or Palmer, is it Palmer?
It's Palmer.
Okay, got it. Yeah. All right, any more comment or question regarding this amendment? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eleven yes, one no, zero abstain.
Amendment one is adopted. Any other amendments from any member? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote on the ordinance as amended? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eleven yes, one no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 95 passes first reading. We're now ready for item F, ordinance 96, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024-25, and adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2025-26 for the Clarksville Transit System. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of ordinance 96. Any comment or question regarding ordinance 96? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Okay, back in my stack, and this will affect a couple of budgets. We have, in the budget, it talks about that we will pay $1,080 for each employee to have access to the employee health clinic, yet we have employees that have opted out of employee-provided health insurance. A survey was done by the HR department sometime, probably during renewal period, asked employees if they would like to have access to the employee health clinic or not. And so the difference between who said that it would like to have access to the employee health clinic and who doesn't have health, that a city provided health insurance, is a handful of people, and I have that, I don't know, did you find the amendment? Okay, so for Clarksville Transit, it, I'm sorry, Clarksville Transit, it's one employee, so the reduction to $1,080. They have 16 who are enrolled in health insurance, and one has opted out of the clinic. So just trying to understand, and I know that this was a discussion when this clinic was first created, why we're paying funds into a service when employees are not enrolled in the health insurance, and they have other health insurance.
Well, the simple answer is, yeah, we use that as recruitment and retention tool. We want to make sure employees have access to health care regardless of whether they're on our health insurance, so that would be one reason. I'm sure that we could come up with other reasons as well, but I understand your rationale. Councilman Shakina on the amendment?
Yes, Mayor, could we have the director for the HR department come up? I have a question regarding this.
Okay, any objection? Seeing none, Ms. Luntz? Councilman Shakina.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Luntz, regarding the employees being able to opt out, and we're still paying, is there any period of time they can, that employee or employees can opt back in? So if we approve this to reduce the funding, and they decided to opt back in, then the funding is no longer there. Do they have this chance to opt back in whilst they opt out, or?
No. With it being city-funded, we would have to pass it during the budget. Even if they were to opt into the clinic during open enrollment, it wouldn't be funded without the budget.
Okay, so that means they can opt in during the year, but then there'll be no funds for?
Correct. Right, so they wouldn't be able to utilize that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any more questions? Councilman Streitman for Ms. Luntz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's kind of in line with that. There's, I know, and I'm just asking, because I guess it could be different since ours is self-funded, but I know that in, out in the private sector, that if you have a change of life, then there's opportunities to then enroll in the services for your insurance. That would be the same with ours. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. Any life event, such as having a baby, losing a spouse, losing a job that had insurance, your spouse loses their job, would open up your enrollment to be able to opt into the city benefit.
So some of these, then, could also have that opportunity outside of open enrollment as well?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, any more comment or question for Ms. Luntz? Thank you. All right, any other comment or question regarding this amendment? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, we're voting on this amendment, number one, to the CTS budget. Every member, any member wish to change their vote? I get it right. All members, please cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Four yes, eight no, zero abstain.
Amendment one fails. Any other amendments for ordinance 96? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote on ordinance 96 as presented? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 96 passes first reading. We're now ready for item G, ordinance 97, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024-25, and adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2025-26 for the governmental funds for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made and properly seconded. We do have a number of amendments, and we're just going to plow through them one at a time. We're going to go from my right to left. Councilman McLaughlin, you're our leadoff hitter.
Thank you, Mayor. My first amendment, it will say, McLaughlin Capital Project Funds. I'd like to make a motion that we unfund and close the Frosty Morn Project, number 20101, capital project, and transfer the property to Community Neighborhood Services Land Bank for privately-built and managed true affordable low-income housing for senior citizens.
Motion been made. Do I hear a second? All right, for an explanation?
Yes.
To the sponsor.
We definitely have a housing crisis in our community, especially affordable housing for our aging seniors, of which some of us are part of that, getting to be part of that group. But in looking at the deficit that we have in the budget, I was trying to come up with creative ways to get more revenue without tax increase, and if we can take city property and put it on the tax rolls, and also have a good feeling about trying to provide housing for people that desperately need it, this is probably the best way to do it. The property is located on a bus line, there's access to amenities in the area, and I just feel like this would be a really good opportunity for the land bank project that Neighborhood and Community Services is working on with Silas at the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Markey, you're recognized on the amendment.
Yes, so I too have a Frosty Morn amendment, and I do like the idea here on its use. I am also defunding it, just as a sponsor, so I would like to amend her amendment, I would like to make a motion to amend her amendment.
Okay, speak your amendment.
My amendment?
To her amendment.
Okay, so my amendment is to, one, defund Frosty Morn. It's a bit complicated, if you guys find my amendment.
And we'll need you to put it in writing at some point before we can vote.
It is here, yeah.
Okay.
It's the real...
Okay. Hang on, let us look it up.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got it here somewhere. You're recognized.
Yes, so it, it deals with Frosty Morn, the, uh, Fire Engine Station Three Outlaw Field Public Safety Complex, and all this combined will essentially reduce the property tax by a penny and a half. So, um, Frosty Morn has like seven point one million dollars allocated to it currently, and essentially I would be decreasing four million to provide for the new fire engine, uh, capital project, as well as, uh, get Station Three up and running, and then, uh, the remainder Frosty Morn will be transferred to the Outlaw Field Public Safety Complex, uh, to get that up and running. These are projects that have been, um, pushed till next fiscal year, but I believe that, uh, it's infrastructure project that the community will benefit right now. Uh, as far as, um, the reduction of the, uh, tax rate, essentially the current engine is in the fire department's, uh, the budget, so by transferring it over to capital project and using Frosty Morn funds to pay for it, we can then decrease that department by the cost of the engine and decrease the tax, uh, by a penny and a half while they're still able to purchase the engine and get, um, Station Three up and then with PD get that public safety complex up and running. Uh, and then I do like the use that the sponsor had for her amendment, uh, to transfer Frosty Morn to make, uh, affordable housing, so that's why I would prefer to combine them.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. I will, um, just kinda respond this way. As far as District Four precinct for the Clarksville Police Department building that, it is a two-step dance, uh, the building, and then it requires twenty-four to twenty-seven new positions for Clarksville Police Department. So if you're committing to, if you're committing to building the building, then we're committing in fiscal twenty-seven to hiring additional police officers, which is about a three million dollar price tag roughly. Um, so it is not, it is more than just building the building.
Uh, I understand, and that is the time we're looking at.
Okay. Um, so that's why that, that project was put on hold because it was a, it was a pretty heavy lift.
Yes.
Uh, secondly, unlike our friends in Washington, we don't have an unlimited debt, uh, ability to issue debt. We do have limited capacity to issue debt, uh, so moving a piece, a fire truck to debt, uh, we are trying to, I'm trying to save that capacity, uh, for the stormwater issues that we need to fix right away. Not the plan and the study that gas and water will be doing, but we've got some numbers coming in a little bit later this summer, which we're gonna have to have a capital project to fix Woodstock and some of the other pro- projects like Alberta Freestone, et cetera. And so we're gonna need that, those, that capacity to address that. So I don't want to take up debt capacity for fire trucks or o- other buildings that we may not need right away or may not be able to use until we know the final number for our stormwater issues that are acute right now. That's part of it. And then the second thing is Frosty Morn. I know, you know, people may not understand why we're spending money, um, on this project, but we are trying to get a property in a legacy neighborhood, uh, that can be used for people who need it. They don't have the means to drive or pay for, uh, venues across town or in other places. We have determined through the planning process that, uh, Neighborhood and Community Services Department would move there, uh, and be the anchor tenant for that building because that's closest to the people that they would serve, uh, partly. Uh, we have public spaces as well, as well as we're in conversations with a health clinic, a nonprofit health clinic, uh, to open there to provide services for the neighborhood. Um, and the public hearing that we had for this project that we held at the Burt Cobb Recreation Center, that was the best attended pu- public hearing that I've ever seen. There was so much passion and so much interest in this project, so I would ask that we not move money. We won't add any money to this project. We're holding back until we get the final numbers on the stormwater issues that we're gonna need some debt capacity to take care of, so I would just ask you to consider not approving this and moving money and especially committing to building a building that we don't, can't commit to staffing next year just yet. Councilman Lovato.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some clarifying questions, um, because this, this is a little complicated because we're talking about real property on one hand, but then we're talking about debt in the same conversation, and so I just wanna clarify exactly what, what we're voting down or what we're voting for. Um, so from what I understand is the original amendment to the budget is just moving the property to another ownership, and then the amendment to the budget is moving the debt that is associated with the property? Am, am I understanding that correctly?
I will call on the sponsor of the original amendment, Councilman McLaughlin, to explain, to answer your question, and then I'll call on the sponsor of the amendment to the amendment to explain. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
How many amendments to the amendments?
We can only have one amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
And I hear Lance Baker in my head.
Okay. That's haunting.
Yeah. Tell me.
Okay, um, so my original, uh, amendment, uh, was to close the Frosty Morn project. No more debt would be issued to it, that, that money that's for out years, uh, allocated for that would go away. It would be closed. And then, um, we would look at transferring the ownership of the property to the land bank for, um, future, um, private entities that wanted to buy that property to build affordable housing for our senior citizens.
So Neighborhood and Community Service in the city would not own this property, a third-party entity, but you don't know who the third-party entity would be?
No, that's part of the land banking process that, um, the Director, um, and a member of the Planning Commission have been going through. It's part, it's been brought up at the Restoring Clarksville Initiative, but, um, there's, we all know there's a desperate need for affordable housing. This would provide land so that a deal could be made for somebody that is in the, the building business to, that specializes in HUD and federal grants could build something like this. Um, we don't have a dedicated senior housing, uh, like this, but there are people in our community that in the past have partnered and bought properties or worked with properties to build affordable housing.
Does this, because there have been a lot of conversations with Neighborhood and Community Services and the organizations in our community working on homeless shelters and affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, does this fall in line with their mission and their current projection?
If, if you wanna call on the Director, you can, but, um, they're desperately looking for property that they can, um, partner to get redeveloped so people have affordable places to live.
Um, Mayor, I would like to hear from, um, Ms. Austin.
Yeah, okay. Be, be happy to call without objection. Michelle Austin, Director of Neighborhood and Community Services. I can tell you, the first step is establishing, if you don't mind, come on up, establishing the land, land bank, land trust, whatever, whatever version that is. Um, but Councilman Lovato, you're recognized for a question.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm not opposed to this, um, to this amendment, but I do have concerns about what would happen to the building. In the meantime, while we're creating this, um, and does this even fall in line with your mission as far as, you know, what you're doing with the homeless coalition and all of that?
Well, of, of course, any affordable housing is, falls in line with our mission. Um, we need as much housing as we can get. We're looking at a fifteen thousand unit gap here in Clarksville over the next five years. That being said, um, you know, I, I'm just learning about this as well. We don't, we aren't necessarily, um, able to stand up a land bank at this moment. We're still in those preliminary stages. We're also looking at a community land trust that might better fit for something like this, but again, it's not something that we can really decide on at this moment. We would really need to look at all the factors to see what was, be the best scenario for funding a project like this.
Councilman Lovato, you have the floor.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I don't have any more questions for Ms. Austin.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I, I am not opposed to this, but my issue with the Frosty Morn is I feel like we have gone for years where it's just been one good idea after another, and I don't want to make a decision today that is just another good idea without the planning. So I hope I see something like this come forward within the year with, with, uh, with better planning, but I will be voting no on this. That's all.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I can also say that I have had meetings with Ms. Austin regarding some land we already have to try and create some how, some affordable housing for senior citizens as well as some, um, some other groups without discussing it in detail. But I know that there's already some land we have that we can look at being able to utilize and do these projects with, and I'm also in agreement with the previous speaker in that I, I would hate to see us give this up, and, and I think I'm speaking in the same agreement. I would hate to see us give up where we are right now, especially with everything we've already spent. I'm very much excited by the aspect of the medical, potential medical clinic. We've seen a lot of activity here recently about more medical facilities coming our way and that could maybe possibly hopefully tie into what the Mayor is referencing, but I think, um, I'd like to see us look at this just a little bit longer before we take the opportunity away for what we could potentially have there for an underserved neighborhood.
Let me give you the posture we're in. Councilman McLaughlin, uh, proposed an amendment to the ordinance ninety-seven. Uh, Councilman Markey has motioned to substitute her amendment for McLaughlin's amendment, so we're discussing the Markey amendment to McLaughlin's amendment on ordinance ninety-seven. Councilman Shakina, you're recognized. If you understood any of that.
Yes, I understood, Mayor. Thank you. And to, um, the council member with the amendment, to the amendment, um, if, if we're talking about, um, defunding Frosty Morn, um, what is your intent for the building? Do we sell the building? What, what happens to this building? Because we've invested in this building, so how do we recoup some type of funding from this? Do you have any plan?
To the sponsor.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, uh, so from la- last year's speaks, our talks that I had with the EDC, um, it is something that we could do. We can ask them to help us to market that building and find a healthcare professional or somebody to come in there, maybe a grocery store, something of the sort, but it's something that if we wanted, they could help us do. Um, and just to speak on the current ideas of healthcare situation, and it's, the city cannot use taxpayer money to build Frosty Morn and then rent it out to a nonprofit. We're gonna be in the same situation as the Performing Arts Center, where we're gonna have to create something similar to the act authority in order to pay for it. So where are we gonna get that funding from? It, that's the route that we're gonna go with, because if you look at also the actual project here in the long-term financial impact, it's gonna cost us about almost five million dollars a year out of our general fund just to pay for the, uh, estimated, uh, debt repayment annually. So it's four million dollars annually for debt repayment and, and about eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for like maintenance and, and facility operation. So it's about five millions. When you look at the current penny cost, that's seven and a half pennies that we're gonna have to spend out of our general fund to fund Frosty Morn, potentially next year at the rate that this is, um, written for the fiscal years, which is very expensive for one building. Uh, and then again, i- it is that, uh, figuring out the ultimate funding, again, we are, if we're gonna do nonprofit and rent it out for restaurants or event centers or something of the sort, it's gonna have to come from a third party, some other authority that we're gonna have to create. So I, I think we should sell it, get back our money, because then it also puts it back in the tax rolls as well. We'll get the initial sale price and then they'll be paying taxes. Eventually we'll make back our money. It, we're not in it that much, uh, compared to the fifty-six million that we will at the end of this.
Councilman Shakina, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, um, sponsor to the amendment, to the amendment. Mayor, um, question for you. Do you know how much, about how much money have we put into this project so far? How many million so far?
About four million so far, and that's demolition, new roof, some drainage, uh, keeping, keeping the site secure while we protect what investment we've had, so around four million or so.
And then we're looking at about how much more?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the next part of this exercise we're going through. Not only what we would have to spend in order to do phase one of the build-out, but how would we, we'd pay for it, much like we did the Performing Arts Center. You know, we, we spent a lot of time and effort on the Performing Arts Center leading up to, um, the creation of the act authority and then having a revenue stream to pay for, uh, the Performing Arts Center. So that's part of the exercise we're going now, going through now.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Haywood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to the, uh, sponsor to the amendment, to the amendment. Um, there's four million, is it four or is it seven? I don't, I don't know. I, I was counting up the money that you were transferring from Frosty Morn, and it looks like there's just over seven million.
There's seven million total in the project at this time.
Okay. Uh, so I went, I went down there to the Frosty Morn project, 'cause I also have a amendment to pull Frosty Morn, unfund and cancel it, um, but I'm, I'm just gonna leave that one as is. Um, so I don't hate this. I, I'm not as invested as everyone else here, but I think this is, the amendment to the amendment adding to the amendment is a great idea. Um, I went down there last week and talked to the supervisor of the security, um, and he kind of walked me around and showed me the, the, the new roof up there, and he didn't let me in there 'cause he didn't want me to get hurt, um, told me I could sue the city. I didn't tell him I was a councilman, but, um, you know, I just, I don't, I don't foresee it being a, something the whole city can use, but, you know, putting four million to a, for new fire truck capital project in Station Three, um, transferring outlaw field public safety complex, complex, I see that as something the entire city can use. So I will be voting in favor of this amendment to the amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more comment or question before I go back to the sponsor of the amendment to the amendment for final thoughts? Councilman Markey, you're recognized for final thoughts on your amendment to the amendment.
I, as was previously, previously stated, I just think this is something that the city as a whole can use. This is something that, again, will reduce the tax rate, uh, by a bit and give us services.
Okay, thank you. We're now voting on the amendment, the Markey amendment to the McLaughlin amendment. All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Five yes, seven no, zero abstain.
Amendment to the amendment failed. We're back on the McLaughlin amendment as presented. Councilman Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm just gonna talk about the, the amendment. I like the idea. Um, you know, you, we, I, 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 I have dealt with, uh, a lot of our, our senior citizens. I've, I've worked with them, um, you know, they, they work their, their whole life and, and they accumulate wealth and, and then it's all taken away, you know, by, by medical bills, you know? It's, uh, seeing, seeing so many senior citizens not being able to afford rent because, um, the medical industry's draining them dry. They end up like homeless, living in their car in the senior center parking lot, you know? It's, uh, it's really a, a rough deal, and, and us as a society, um, we have a really bad habit of just, this person can't work anymore, they're just not fast enough, so, so then they're just automatically discarded, so I'm, I'm in favor of it and I do plan on voting yes, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment or question? Councilman McLaughlin, final thoughts?
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, we're now voting on the McLaughlin amendment to ordinance ninety-seven. Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Seven yes, five no, zero abstain.
The amendment number one passes. We're now back to our leadoff hitter. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Okay, um, need to regroup a little bit, I apologize. Um, okay, um, the McLaughlin amendment to reduce FY twenty-six funds from Public Relations Code forty-six thirty to match, uh, FY twenty-five actual, um, so I have, uh... Um, so I have, uh, Fire Department, Human Resources, Mayor's Office, Parks, Police and Street, and the reductions, reductions amount are listed. Um, and on the comments section, I showed what the actual spend, um, year-to-date through the end of March, uh, May 25 was. Um, I make a motion for approval.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of McLaughlin amendment number two? Two. Thank you. Any comment or question regarding this amendment? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All, we're voting on the McLaughlin amendment number two. Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eight, nine yes, three no, zero abstain.
Amendment number two passes. Back to you, Councilman McLaughlin.
Okay, um, there is an amendment that says reduce nonprofit wage increase and benefits to match, match city employees. And what this would be, would be a reduction in the amount of $21,155 for general wage increases for the airport, a reduction of $15,600 to airport benefits, uh, $60,118 from the Regional Planning Commission and $31,274 from the Customs House Museum. Total reduction would be 128, 128,147. And, um, at the bottom is a chart that, um, the Finance Department put together after we had some budget discussions with nonprofits and we were, we had heard discrepancies of benefits and pay, um, to the nonprofits that receive city funding. And I for one don't think it's fair that we're funding nonprofits at a better rate than we are our own employees. So that's, that's what this amendment is for. Oh, and I have to make a motion for approval. Sorry.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of the McLaughlin amendment number three. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized on the amendment number three.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was involved in this conversation as well when this, this was a big discussion that we had within the Finance Committee Budget Meeting and I was very grateful for the conversation. Um, I do think that we should let these groups know that next year, that their funding needs to look the same way, that their insurance needs to look the same way, because I agree. Um, knowing that one of them here, they get 100% for the employee, whereas our employees are having to pay in. I do think that that's something that they need to be notified on because it's not during their open enrollment. So they can't really make changes to that until their time for open enrollment. Also, for the Regional Planning Commission, I'm unsure without talking to them further. If I remember correctly, what was stated is that they are on the county plan for their insurance, so they may have to actually fit to what the county does there since they are part of that and considered within that. I, I, I would be, I'm speaking out of turn of knowing for certain on that, but I would think that it would have to match up with the rest of those. So I'm not sure that we could really make the change there on theirs and be correct in doing that. Um, but like I said, with the others, before making that change, I do think that they should make that change over the next year. And when they come to us with their funding request, it should be to where they are not, uh, we're not paying more for their employees than what we're paying for our own employees.
Any more comment or question regarding this amendment? Councilman McLaugh, uh, I'm sorry. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
They get us mixed up all the time.
Well, it's my old eyes here, sorry.
Um, I actually have an amendment to her amendment because I was bringing forward something similar. Um, I would actually like to, um, increase the custom house. I, I guess this is a procedural question because I actually have two changes. So do I need to make two amendments or three amendments or just one full sweep amendment?
The amendment that you're proposing?
Hers is here and mine is here.
Okay. So describe your amendment that you're wanting to substitute for her amendment?
So my, um, my amendment is very similar to hers except for my numbers are higher. So I would like to increase some of her reductions.
Better stated, maybe you will substitute your, are you wanting to substitute your, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little dense here.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So my amendment is for the Custom House Museum to reduce their budget, um, by $300,888 and to reduce the senior center budget by $44,000 and to reduce the HRC budget. She doesn't have the HRC on here actually, but, um, do you want me to bring mine up separately or?
I think it would be best to do that, just to eliminate any confusion.
Done.
Okay, all right. Councilman Shakina, you're recognized on the McLaughlin amendment.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I have a question regarding the RPC since it's, it's partially paid by the city and the county, correct?
Right.
Um, so reducing it 60,000, can you, can you clarify, um, how that's going to look if we take that 60,000 or, you know? Because again, like I said, it's joint, it's a joint type of venue with the city and the county.
Well, I can't clarify it, but Mr. Tindall probably could if you wanted to hear from him.
Oh, yes, I would love to.
All right, without objection, Mr. Tindall. Councilman Shakina, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tindall, um, the RPC being joint, uh, being a joint venue, city and county, so the city reducing it by 60,000, um, you know, how, how is that going to impact the, the services that you provide for the city?
Yes, sir. Uh, first of all, this is a surprise to me tonight, so I'm trying to crunch numbers really quick here. Per the joint city-county resolutions we were established on, it's a 50/50 share of expenses. The county, as you know, has already approved their budget. However, it's always approved with a caveat that says RPC funding will be whatever the city is, since typically the city's budget is passed after the county's budget. So in essence, a $60,000 cut's really a $120,000 cut to our budget, um, for next year, probably around a seven or eight percent cut to the whole budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That was, that was my question because I know it's a joint venue and I know that, um, it's going to impact the overall budget.
Okay, thank you. Any more comment or question before I go to the, Councilman Brown, you're recognized on this amendment?
So with the county doing a 2% cost of living and we're looking at two and a half, is that going to throw off those numbers also for the RPC since, you know, those numbers don't match there either?
Mr. Tindall? Councilman Brown, please ask your question.
So what was y'all's planned call, general wage increase?
Our general wage increase, we do a COLA with a step increase and it comes out to two and a half percent, but we don't give our COLAs until January. So we're already funded, our salaries are what they are right now, and then in January the COLA would kick in, uh, and we are budging two and a half percent.
Okay. Because I know, you know, the county is doing 2% COLA in January and so if, if we're doing two and a half, you know, those numbers don't jive either, you know, to, to match up to, if they're doing 1% and we're doing one and a half, because it comes from both.
It's, um, it, you can't compare. You're both apples and oranges. They have a step system and a COLA system. You're more of a general wage increase. So typically I find that it comes out in the wash over a couple of years. Maybe one's a little higher one year, one's a little higher the next year, but y'all are trying to keep even with the market.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just in light of what we heard from Mr. Tindall about how a $60,000 cut, uh, or reduction, uh, to this budget, uh, would actually be a $120,000 cut, I would just ask the sponsor, uh, if she would be, uh, supportive of just reducing that number to $30,059 to have the, the same overall impact to the department.
To the sponsor.
Thank you, I actually wrote that down.
Okay.
So.
That concludes my report.
Be very afraid, be very afraid. Y'all are thinking alike over there. So are you making that in the form of a motion, amendment, term?
I will, yes, since it appears that I have the support of the sponsor. Yes.
Okay, would you restate your motion?
Yes, I, uh, move to amend the amendment to change the value 60,118 dollars, uh, for the decrease to the Regional Planning Commission to 30,059.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion and properly seconded. Uh, the amendment to the McLaughlin amendment is to reduce the Regional Planning Commission. Is this specifically for the general wage increase or for salary increases?
It is to, uh...
Because generally we just appropriate money to half their budget to them or our half anyway.
Right. So in, so in my mind, what this is doing, it is reducing the amount based on what was in, like, on that line item in the budget that was submitted in the budget book.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman McLaughlin?
Well, and the header of the amendment says to reduce general wage increase and benefits to match city employees, so it's kind, it's, it's the same thing.
Okay, all right, just, I'm just clarifying, want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to remind everybody too, they did just, uh, reduce what they were asking for us, uh, asking from us by 30,000, 15,000 for us, 15,000 from the county. So I can ask Mr. Tindall to come up here and talk about that if you'd like. I know that...
Mr. Tindall, without objection, Mr. Tindall, you may as well sit on the front row. Uh, Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Could you talk to us about, because I know we voted on this in the RPC as well. Can you talk about that budget reduction?
Yeah, it was, it was on your slides last week about changes over the last month before your budget, um, in an effort to help both the city and the county. The county's budget was even, but they were still struggling and have made some cuts to projects at the county. So in the effort of trying to, um, be a team player and everyone expected to do their part, uh, we decided at the Planning Commission to, uh, go basically into our general fund 30,000 next year, meaning $15,000 of savings to each department. Um, so we've already made that cut voluntarily this past year. I think we amended the budget last month at the Planning Commission already to reflect that, uh, which was given to both the city and the county, uh, accounts and budgets and finance departments.
And in regard to my earlier, uh, statements, you guys are on the county insurance plan, correct?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have the benefit of not being self-insured. We were many, many years ago before I got here and it cost us a lot, but we are on the school system, AKA the county, uh, insurance, and our employees pay 15% of their premiums, uh, for health, dental vision, et cetera.
And you can't change what's, I mean, you have to do the same as what?
We just had open enrollment last week, so, uh, I'm trying to figure out, and again, it's apples and oranges, what the sponsor wants to get at with 60,000, where we're that far off, because my entire medical budget next year is only 170,000. So I can't imagine between a two and a half percent raise for 13 individuals and 170,000 of total medical expenses where 60,000 evens out in there. So I'd like to have a further talk, uh, about the line items to figure out where the difference, uh, is coming from.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Shakina, you're recognized on the amendment to the amendment.
Yes, Mayor, and, and it's for the sponsor of the amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
Would she be in favor of, um, just deleting the RPC's cut altogether because there are a lot of second, maybe third, fourth order effects, um, to cutting this thing, being that it's a joint, um, venue?
Well, we're on the amendment to the amendment, which is Councilman Zacharias.
Okay, well, so...
So your question would be directed to him.
Will you be, will you be, um, in favor of just omitting or deleting the RPC's cut altogether?
I, I would support that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make that amendment then that we...
Well, we can't amend an amendment to an amendment. It would have to be a, have to be a separate deal.
I was going to try to pull one, Mayor, but thank you.
Good try, good try. We would have to vote down this amendment to the amendment and then come back to the original amendment and then come to you for an amendment.
Yep, cool.
And if you're following that?
Yes, I'm following.
All right. Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just ask everybody to not vote down my amendment, and that's because if the, if we're trending or if we're leaning towards eliminating the RPC altogether, let's at least start from a position of closer to zero than where we are now, if that makes sense.
I think you sent shockwaves when you said eliminating the RPC.
From the reduction.
From the reduction.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, we're going to have to get medical help for Mr. Tindall.
Wearing those white shirts.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else wish to be recognized on the amendment, Zacharias amendment to the McLaughlin amendment? Seeing none, hearing none, we're voting on the Zacharias amendment to the McLaughlin amendment. Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Ten yes, two no, zero abstain.
The amendment to the amendment is adopted. We're now on the McLaughlin amendment as amended. Councilman McLaughlin, you are recognized.
Okay, uh, based on the conversation, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment to pull the reduction from the Planning Commission.
Okay, you've heard the motion to remove the reduction to the Regional Planning Commission from the amended amendment. Did I get that right, Mr. Bittner?
Yeah.
Close? Okay. All right, and it's been properly seconded. Any comment or question regarding that motion? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment, which is to remove the Regional Planning Commission totally from this amendment?
Not the Earth.
Not from the earth, but from, just from this amendment. Just removing the, the 30,059 dollars reference to the Regional Planning Commission from this amendment. Okay, everybody know what we're voting on. Madam Clerk, you got us straight? Every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eleven yes, one no, zero abstain.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment is adopted. We're now on the amendment as amended. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
So for clarification, what we're on is the reduction of 21,155 from the airport for a general wage increase, 15,600 from the airport from benefits and 31,274 from the Customs House Museum.
And she renews that motion? Any comment or question regarding this amendment as amended? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. As soon as we get there, I know. All right, every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Nine yes, three no, zero abstain.
Amendment three as amended is adopted. Councilman McLaughlin, our leadoff hitter, you're recognized.
Can I take a break and pass it on to somebody else while, while I regroup?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come to Councilman Markey, you're next up. You're recognized on amendments.
I'm ready for this one.
Oh, okay, just want to make sure.
I'll try again.
Well, you're out of order. All right, we're, nice try, nice try. All right, going around, Councilman Holloman, you're recognized on your amendment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, so what this does is, um, it's, um, I guess it's pretty brutal. Um, it, it removes 1,081,086 dollars from the Custom House Museum, uh, removes, um, 534,999 dollars from the Regional Planning Commission and essentially like defunding them, because like my, my stance is like Clarksville's full, like we don't need to grow anymore, you know? So it's, it's no longer, no longer needed. Human Relations Commission, it's a reduction of 50,000. Um, and then with that, the numbers are all messed up because we just, we just, um, cut some of the, the Custom House Museum, uh, funding. So, so the numbers aren't going to need to be adjusted, so the numbers are off. But, um, basically what it does is it gives wage increases to the police department, the fire department, and then, uh, security as well. And, um, out of, out of that total number, uh, from the cuts, a hundred thousand dollars goes towards the seed bank, and that would be under the, uh, City Forestry Department. But, um, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Fails for lack of a second. All right. We're now ready for, do you have another amendment?
No.
Councilman McLaughlin, do you, are you regrouped? Do you want me to keep going?
I, I can, I'm ready.
You're ready, okay. Back to you. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, um, we, we talked about this a little, okay, the next amendment is convert grounds and facilities maintenance special, specialist positions to... we, we talked about this a little, okay, the next amendment is convert grounds and facilities maintenance special, specialist positions to contract. This would be the new positions for parks and recreation, um, totaling two forty-five, four forty-eight. I did not touch the, the specialty positions as far as, uh, turf man, management, but in trying to figure out how we can continue or how we can get out of having deficits year by year, I will be bringing forward a resolution next week that, uh, through attrition, um, meaning if somebody leaves employment with the city in certain positions, grass cutting, et cetera, that we look at putting those out to contract. Once we add a position, it's very difficult to eliminate a position, but instead of replacing those, um, with people and benefits and lawn equipment and maintenance, that we look at, um, doing that through attrition, and this would, this would be the start of that. So, I make a motion for approval.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of McLaughlin Amendment Four, Madam Clerk, is that where we are? Five. We're on McLaughlin Amendment Number Five. Councilman Chikin, have you recognized on the McLaughlin Amendment Number Five?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have, I have a question for either the, um, Parks and Rec Director or someone from Purchasing regarding contracts and getting this thing on a contract.
Okay, well, let's start with the Parks and Recreation Department, Ms. Laterno. Councilman Chikin, have you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you, Mr. Laterno. Um, question for you. I know you probably already have a plan to fill these positions and buy win and things like that. If we vote to decrease this funding and go the route of the contract, a contract or, um, about how long you think that's gonna take to actually put that in place and then the effectiveness, the control that you have over it, um, versus the control you may have over city employees, what is that gonna look like and some of those challenges that it may present for you in that department?
Sure. Uh, we currently have three mowing contracts, uh, and we mow a good deal of our outlying, uh, parks. They're on a seven-day mowing contract, and we had to spread it out to three different ones to be able, because no one single one could cover all of them. But, we do those at some of the, the outliers, the manned parks, the Heritage Park, the Liberty Park, uh, the ones that are more probably groomed. It's essential for us to have control over that because we have it on a daily basis that we have to, to groom them to our standards and they have to be maintained a little bit better, um, such as our turf, our, our soccer fields. We're adding, um, a, a good deal of the, the, and you did say not the turf positions, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Um, a lot of the reason that we're asking for some of these is because we've added, we haven't had a new person since two thousand and eighteen. We've not added any new positions, and I've got a list here of the position, the properties that we've added. Smith Trigern Mansion, L and N Train Depot, Beach Street Park, Crossland Greenway, Taylor Greenway, um, and then some more trail pieces, and that's not something that we typically can, um, easily contract. It would take us some time to get that together. We would have to probably figure out what was, would be, make sense to do a contract with and what would not, but some of these are maintenance also, so it's physical building maintenance as well. You don't get the, I'm not gonna say that you don't get standards, because we do have some really good contracts, but you also have to have people to oversee those contracts as well, but, you don't necessarily get the same product, and a lot of our folks are dual-purpose. They don't just mow grass, they don't just, um, maintain one thing, but they'll set up for events. They do, they set up for summer night lights, they take turns doing the tournaments, the soccer tournaments, the, the baseball tournaments, and doing all the special events that we have. So, not any one person in our department is just mowing and weed eating properties. And I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that's, that's part of the question, but the second part of it is in terms of putting a con, contract in place, and we're talking about, um, most of these are under fifty thousand dollars, only one that's fifty-three thousand. What does it look like? How long does it take? Does it take three months, you know, ninety days? Does it take a hundred and twenty days? How long does it take to put a contract in place to fulfill these requirements, and then we're talking about the start date, right?
Right. I would say probably ninety days would, would be, because we're gonna have to figure out what areas we can easily do a contract or what we could contract out. Uh, we'll have to go to purchasing, we'll have to bid it out, we'll have to see if we get any bids, um, and then have to start it, and probably in the new season, we wouldn't be able to start until probably March of, of next year. It would, we couldn't do anything with it this year.
Okay, 'cause in the, and I was gonna be, the last following was, if you don't get a bid, right, you can't hire anybody. So, what's gonna happen if you don't get a bid? Who's gonna pick up the slack?
You guys are gonna get a lot of complaints.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Streetman for Ms. Laterno, or just in general about the amendment?
Um, it's a little bit of in general, and I'm really not sure if this question would be for you or even if, miss, Mr. Smith, I know he's Street Department, but let me just lead into it with, I understand the thought process behind the sponsor. Uh, the sponsor's amendment, however, um, if I recall correctly, several years ago, we tried to contract out more of these, this type of work, and I think we had issue with it, and that's why I'm not really sure if it was you or Mr. Smith could talk about it, because I know his department is responsible for a lot of the mowing of right-of-ways, but I know we had difficulty in trying to get contractors taking it on, and they were rather large projects, and then we even kept, I think, busting it down and still having difficulty. Can you speak to that, or would I need to put that question to Mr. Smith?
Just from a high level, I can speak to the fact that we, we did divide the mowing contracts, as Ms. Laterno said, into several areas, because one, one company, one contractor couldn't handle it to our specifications, so we did break it up. But these positions do more than just mow grass, as she said.
Yeah, I get that.
And while I get where she's trying to head, it's just, it's, we're, we're kind of in a point where we need to add bodies to take care of the facilities that we're adding to our inventory, and we've got a list as long as a nickel shoe string of other, uh, parks and facilities we wanna add.
That, that concludes my report, Mayor.
concludes your report, all right. Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just gonna start off, uh, by, by saying that, uh, I do have a, a direct family member who is currently employed as a grounds and facilities maintenance, uh, uh, employee with the city. Since this, uh, specific, um, amendment affects, like, growth positions, adding positions, I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, but I just want to make that very clear, uh, before I say what I'm about to say. Um, I lived through a, a time in the Army when we did a lot of this. Um, we converted positions, gate guards, that sort of thing, to contract positions because we needed those people. Two thousand and three, two thousand and four, the surge, and it made a lot of sense, uh, to take some of those soldiers off the gates and put them back into positions where uh, they could do what, um, they joined the Army to do. It was not a cost-saving measure by any means. It ended up being more expensive for everybody, and at the time, it wasn't a big deal because it was GWOT, and that money was just coming in, uh, from, uh, from Washington. We're in a kind of a different situation here, and I am concerned that an attempt to, to save money on these positions is actually gonna end up costing more money than it saves. Uh, plus, we lose all of the benefits that these employees provide outside of, um, you know, mowing and that sort of thing. So, for that reason, uh, I, I think I'm a no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. To the sponsor, these are the five new positions.
Yes.
Okay, these are not existing people.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilman Brown, you're recognized on this amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my question would be, is, you know, cutting these five positions and contracting out the mowing, do we have any kind of idea of how much that contract would cost, you know, whether that's gonna make up? You know, is it gonna save us a thousand, ten thousand, fifty thousand? That's an unknown on this, that we don't know if we cut these positions out.
It would purely be speculation or a guess on our part. Based on what Ms. Laterno said, we don't know exactly which parts, facilities, properties they would mow, so we'd have to figure that out. Okay, any other comment or question regarding this amendment? To the sponsor for closing comments.
The end.
All right, you heard it here first. All right, we're voting on McLaughlin Amendment Number Five. Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Two yes, ten no, zero abstain.
Amendment Number Five fails. Councilman McLaughlin.
Um, the other amendment I had was related to the health clinic, and based on the previous vote, I feel like that'd be a waste of everybody's time to bring up, so I will not bring that up, and I believe that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Living right along, we're now ready for Councilman Haywood for your amendments. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I first want to say sorry for the few hundred trees that I killed in the meaning of, uh, my amendments. So, I have thirty pieces of paper on each of your desks, um, so if you look at them, they have, um, eliminate tax increase, and then you'll see eliminate tax increase, option two. If you just wanna look at eliminate tax increase, you can put option two aside, um...
Give us just a moment to find it.
Like the Yellow Pages.
So, it just says eliminate tax increase with no option two beside it?
Yes, sir. Option two, uh, I don't think we'll need. I, I hope we won't need. I should've said option one, you know, it'd probably be easier to read.
I'm trying to find it. Hang on, just...
Throw option two to the side. It started off as one page, but I, then I've put it all on, you know, each department on one page. I, I don't know why.
So, the, the, your amendment is, the amendment description name is eliminate tax increase, period, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Yes, sir.
All right, you are recognized on the eliminate tax increase.
Yeah.
No, just, just eliminate tax.
Just, just increase, yeah. Option two is null.
Hang on a second. What's the question? Everybody got it? Okay, you're recognized. Councilman Haywood?
Okay, so the first department would be the Legislative and Administrative. Um, I propose to decrease it by fifteen thousand. I saw the reduced discretionary or travel budget, um, so I guess a motion.
Fail for lack of a second. You're recognized on your next amendment.
Uh, Building Codes Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, decreased by a million, uh, delay three of five new hires, reduce vehicle equipment and upgrades.
Fail for lack of a second. Okay, it's properly seconded, it's in front of us now. You're recognized, Councilman Haywood, for an explanation.
Uh, so I just wanted to delay three of the five new hires, um, and reduce the vehicle equipment and upgrades. That was it.
Okay. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized on the Haywood Amendment. We're calling this amendment Two.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry? Six B. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, first of all, we're talking about a million dollars here, and I know it says delay three of five new hires, reduce vehicle equipments, upgrades. I, just as a reminder, we actually don't get true line item approval. What you're doing is taking a million away from the Building and Codes budget, and then we've hired the directors to decide how their funds are utilized in their budget. So, um, I, it's to my understanding, because I did have some department heads reach out to me, and this list of thirty that we have here, I believe you just contacted them today to find out their feedback on the cuts to the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know we had budget meetings just a few weeks ago to where all of their budgets were presented to us in detail? It was a great opportunity to attend and ask questions. Was there a reason why you chose to utilize tonight or today to do it versus actually attending those meetings and talking to the department heads prior to throwing this all out to them today?
No, there wasn't a reason.
Okay, that's a good answer. Um, so what kind of feedback did you get from Building and Codes is what a million would do to their department?
I don't think, uh, I don't know if Building and Codes got back to me.
Did you call them and see if you could talk to them?
I didn't get off work till three-thirty.
I, I, I myself didn't get off work, uh, until four o'clock, but I managed to be able to reach out and talk to them. And I will say that our department heads are readily available for us to reach out and talk to them anytime, not just today, but in the, I think it's been four or five weeks since we've had these budget meetings and had this information before us. I know from talking to Mr. Crosby that a million-dollar hit to his budget means he's not gonna be able to hire any of the new people that he has requested from us, and there's a good chance that, or it's very likely, that he would actually lose some of the current employees that he has here, has with him now. So, that's gonna be a severe reduction in services from the Building and Codes Department to be able to verify, and that would more than likely come from the, um, come from the people that are out there looking to verify everything that we've talked about with the Restore Clarksville movement, because we can't not inspect buildings to ensure that they're safe, but everything else that we're putting on them and asking them to be able to do. So, I mean, I think my advice, not only now but in the future, is I think it would be good to actually talk to the department heads earlier than day of when you're talking about making such a hit to their budgets, because it's, that's a substantial, and especially when you think about losing employees and losing the ability for Building and Codes to be able to enforce the laws that we're sitting up here and asking them to enforce. So, I'll be voting against this with ease.
Councilman McLaughlin, I've come back to you. That, Councilman McLaugh, McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's a tongue twister.
Yeah, it is.
So, I, I'm against this in, for several reasons, one of which, we currently have five codes enforcement officers for the whole city of Clarksville. They have not had the staffing to be able to be self-initiate codes violations. They've strictly been running off of complaints that people call in for, uh, dilapidated structures, cars parking on grass, uh, tall grass, et cetera. And I don't know about you, but one of my top five calls I get from constituents is codes violations. The Mayor and Justin worked together to, to bring these new positions forward so that we can get on top of making our city look better, as a previous, um, spokesperson, uh, mentioned, part of the Restoring Clarksville initiative. Improved property brings more property taxes, makes people feel proud about where they live. It also, hopefully, in the major parts of Clarksville and the major corridors, will encourage people to invest in businesses there. And we can't continue to operate a city our size with five codes enforcement officers. It's, it's not gonna work. So, I ask that you please vote this down. Um, in a perfect world, we'd have a code enforcement officer for every ward, but this, this is a start, and this will, will help the department be able to, to continue to work with property owners, to have property owners tear down dilapidated buildings at the property owner's expense, not the taxpayers' expense. Uh, four buildings in four months was an amazing feat by this department, and they've done so much with so little staff. We need to continue to support that to help our city look better. People will feel proud about where they live and where we are. Thank you.
Councilman Chikin, have you recognized?
Yes, Mayor, um, I have a question for the Director of the, um, Building and Codes, if I may.
All right, without objection, Mr. Crosby. Councilman Chikin, have you recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know we have five code enforcement officers. In your, your profession, what do you feel is the true number, the true number, not what's, not, not what's here, right, these five new hires? But what's the true number, because again, as the previous council member alluded to, man, that seems like that's the number-two call, right? It's, it's codes, codes violations, right, and everybody wants something to be done, and they say, well, your department can't do it. So, what do you, what do you really need to be able to enforce these codes?
In my opinion, and we went over this during the, uh,
Yes.
the, um, meetings we've had previously, we ran about thirty to forty thousand inspections last year with five code officers. That's a tremendous amount of work, but what that means is I have to do it faster. I can't do it better if I'm doing it faster. So, we can whittle it down. A million-dollar cut gets rid of code enforcement, period. The folks we have on staff now, that we can't keep them with a million-dollar cut. So, code enforcement goes away with this if it's, uh, upheld. The true number, in my honest opinion, is about thirty code officers to take care of the city. In a way, I'm, I'm proud for, right? So, we work hard, but I'm from Clarksville. I'm born and raised here. I know what it can look like. I know how hard these guys work. You give me two code officers per ward, be a proud place to call home. So, we're, we're grateful for the staff we have. These guys work so hard. I, I can't even tell you, their heart is in it. You don't go to a lot of other places and find heart. Yes, you can get people to come to work, that's not a problem. To get the heart that we've been able to get in our office with our code enforcement staff is tremendous. You guys know, y'all deal with them. Their heart is here, so it...
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that because, you, like I said, that's, that's the number-two call. Every, seems like four or five times a week, somebody's calling... Every, seems like four or five times a week, somebody's calling, saying they file complaints, code is not doing anything, or they're not acting fast enough, can you please follow up, right? And even my neighbor, he cuts half of his yard, right, the part that's between him and I, right, so I don't call code. But the other side, he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't really want to cut it. So, so I understand, yeah, but that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilman Brown on this amendment.
So, looking at this, you know, this million, it also says reduce vehicle and equipment upgrades. Is there specific pieces that they're, that we're wanting to cut with this? Because that's, that's a twenty-five percent of his budget. I mean, his budget's four million, is what they've requested totally. It does double his number of staff, but that's just a, a million dollars out of a four million dollar budget, that's, that's twenty-five percent of it, it's just quite a bit.
It's a big lick. Councilman Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, to address something I heard in one of, one of the, the arguments, talking about line item approval. And, and you're right, like, the city council cannot do line item approval, but, but department heads should understand intent, you know? And the thing is too, like, the mayor, the mayor, the department head's boss is, is the mayor. So if you convince the mayor, everyone votes in unison on something with the understanding that this money is going towards this, this, or the, the reduction of this money is going towards this. I mean, I think the, the message should be conveyed. You know, sometimes I wonder, like, do, do we represent Clarksville? Do we represent our wards, or do we represent the department heads? Because it just, it just seems like, a lot of times, like, the decisions, that's, that's the, that's the real weight for the decisions, but that's all I got. I just want to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding this amendment? Councilman Haywood, you're recognized for final thoughts on your amendment.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We're now voting on the Haywood Amendment six B to ordinance ninety-seven. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
One yes, eleven no, zero abstain.
Amendment fails. Councilman Haywood, you're recognized on the next amendment.
It seems like the rest will fail for lack of seconds, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. We are now ready for Councilman Lovato. We're up to you. I'm sorry. Help if I turn your mic on. You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. The first one is, the first amendment is for the other city-funded agencies, for the Custom House, Senior Center, and HRC reductions.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right. Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of the Lovato amendment. Madam Clerk, which amendment number is this?
Seven.
Seven. All right. You're recognized for an explanation.
Thank you. So this is a reduction to three of our other city-funded agencies. The first one is the Custom House Museum, and we'll have to adjust this number for the previous amendment, but in total, reducing their budget by three hundred thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars to bring their total budget to seven hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the reason for that was, you know, very similar to what a previous amendment had stated. When we looked at the budget during the budget review meetings, there's a lot of issues and concerns that I have, specifically with the Custom House, and the exorbitant percentage of tax dollars that they need to continue to operate. So reducing this, I'm hoping that they will change their business strategy. And the next one, for the senior citizen center, reducing that by forty-four thousand dollars to match their budget from last year. They do amazing things for our community, but they're another entity that needs to be driven by the people who utilize their services, and we need to start weaning some of these organizations off the taxpayer dollar. The HRC organization, reducing their amount by twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. So if you look at their budget, a lot of, there are many of their line item activities that, they don't have a dollar amount, they just have a to-be-determined about next to it. And so I don't think that it is good stewards of our taxpayer dollars to give money out that is to be determined and really no explanation of what they're going to be using that for. So that is the explanation.
All right. You've heard the, you've heard the explanation of the amendment. Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized on the Lovato Amendment number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. So my comments are specifically for the, the Custom House Museum. I, I too was a little frustrated when I was reviewing the, the Custom House budget. For those that, that maybe aren't sitting up here and don't know, we get a, a page that kind of lists, you know, accomplishments in the last year, goals for the upcoming year, that sort of thing. And when I compared Custom House Museum's document that showed what their goals were, what they accomplished last year, from this year's budget, it was identical to the one from last year's budget. So to me, it kind of feels like there, there's no attempt to grow. That being said, I, I do think that there is a place for publicly funded things like museums and parks and rec, that sort of thing. That stuff is important to a community. I've made my comments about that a couple of years ago, when we were talking about Wings of Liberty Museum. I think one of the greatest things that our nation's capital has to offer is the Smithsonian and all of these other incredible opportunities to, to really dive into our history. I'm going to, I'm going to offer an amendment to this, okay? I, I am satisfied with the, the decrease that we have already passed by amendment today. So I'm going to propose that we, that I, or that we amend this amount, this decrease from this amendment. I will write Zacharias Amendment on the top of my copy, cross out that first line to make everybody happy.
Would you please?
Yes. But with the statement that when we do this again next year, I'm going to be looking really hard at goals, accomplishments, and I would like to see the money that we, so we're already providing the lease to the, to the Customs House, I would like to see the, the funds that we give to the Custom House as part of this budget process to be somewhat tied to what they bring in, in donations from the previous year. If we can encourage them to step up fundraising efforts, we can show our appreciation by matching those funds. But I am not in favor of such a significant cut at this time. Like I said, I think we need to send the message. I think I've just done that. And that is something that I would like to look at next year. That's all.
So are you making-
Yes, I'm making a motion to amend with the Zacharias Amendment.
Then we will make copies of the Zacharias Amendment to the Lovato Amendment and distribute that before we move any further.
I'll second his motion.
Properly seconded. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I got across that Kerry's name.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
It's just, it's just eliminating it, so.
Does everybody have a copy of the Zacharias Amendment? Some number, whatever it is? We're, we're going to get an explanation here in a second. Another one, I should say.
I'll donate mine to cause.
I've got one. Okay. The posture we're in is that Councilman Zacharias has proposed an amendment to the Lovato Amendment, and I'm going to come back to the sponsor of the amendment to the amendment for an explanation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. All I'm doing is amending the Lovato Amendment by eliminating the three hundred and thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollar decrease to the Custom House Museum budget. The other two decreases would remain.
Okay. All right. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized on the, the Zacharias Amendment to the Lovato Amendment.
Okay. Not to complicate things more, I'd like to divide this into three separate motions.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made to divide the question, which is to divide the, the three items in this amendment into three different votes, properly seconded. Any comment or question regarding the motion to divide? Where all we're doing is simply deciding to, to divide the question into three separate votes. Councilman Streetman on the motion to divide the question? No?
I'll just get back in line.
Councilman Chikina on the motion to divide the question?
No, Mayor. I'll just back in line.
Okay. Won't take you out of line. Okay. All right. Any, any comment or question regarding the motion and properly seconded to divide the question? We're going to be voting on each one of these reductions individually. Madam Clerk, I don't know how you're keeping up with it, but I'm thankful you're doing it. Just let me know when you're ready. And we'll be voting on the first reduction, which is the Customs House Museum. We have, I'm sorry, thank you. That's why we have the clerk. Okay. We're voting to divide the question, so all in favor of approving the dividing of the question into three separate votes, please register your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Twelve yes, zero no, zero abstain.
Now, we're, we have just approved dividing the question. We're on the Customs House Museum reduction. Councilman, Councilman Streetman on that one? Okay. You're recognized on the Customs House Museum question.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this being brought forward, and I appreciate what was said, but I'm actually in agreement with the earlier speaker. I do, in regard to not quite prepared to take that big of a hit. I do know how important it is to our community, and I know we're also responsible for some of that, in that many, many, many years ago, it was determined that the county is responsible for the library, we're responsible for the Customs House Museum. So I know there's responsibilities on us for that, and I learned about that myself many years ago when I served on the Guild and learned a lot about the Customs House Museum from that aspect. But I do agree as well that please take note of this, that really needs to be looked at, how much is being requested from us, and I would like to see that request to us be less next year, and not just in regards to the benefits that we discussed, but everything. Please look for ways that you can come to us less for funding, because that's quite a bit that we are putting that way, and since that was money that was unfortunately not at the time chosen to go into the act authority, and now we don't have the ability to add them to the act authority, so it's unfortunate that we couldn't take this off of our plates as it was. But that is what it is. So I, at this time, I'm going to be voting no against this, but again, please take note of it for next year.
Councilman Chikina?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that the, the museum with this director, they, they do a lot to try to, you know, balance their books and raise money. They have the flying high fundraiser every year, and they work extra hard to try to get that, get the membership up throughout the year, and donors. But of course, just like any entity, we can always do better, so I'm quite sure this will serve notice to the leadership team over there to kind of figure out how, how they're going to improve, and if they reach out to us, hopefully we'll be willing to assist them in improving their platform. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the city does need publicly funded entities, and the museum has their part in that. But if you look at their budget, if you look at the income that they bring in, in total, it is a little over one point eight million dollars. They are requesting from the city one million eighty-one thousand and eighty-six dollars. The majority of their budget does come from the city. So is it a hefty decrease? Yes, it is, but it is much needed, because they are relying heavily on the taxpayer dollars. And I want to remind you all, the atmosphere of the financial situation of our taxpayers and our constituents, so when we're looking at trying to decrease the tax rate and to get it lower, these organizations should be the first ones that we cut from instead of our departments. Thank you.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Mayor, I would like to ask, I think this might be the right place to do this, but every month, the, all of our departments have to present their budgets to us on a monthly basis at the Finance Committee meeting. I would like to be, and I think the rest of the Finance Committee would probably be supportive of this, I would like these other entities to also have to present to us, maybe not on a monthly basis and extend the meeting, but at least maybe on a quarterly basis so that we are able to see it as the year goes on. Is that, is this the appropriate time to make that suggestion?
Well, we won't put it in the form of a motion, but I will make that a requirement of those funded agencies, that they will report to us on a regular basis, and we'll determine what that is.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comment or question? Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
So, we're not on an amendment, on an amendment, are we?
No, we're on, we're on, simply on the Customs House Museum reduction question.
So I'd like to make an amendment to removing the, instead of just taking them off, to amend it from three hundred thousand dollar reduction to just a hundred thousand dollar deduction. Can we do that?
Second.
You heard the motion. Councilman Zacharias, point of order. What's the point?
Because we, because the amendment, my amendment to reduce that number to zero passed, what's in front of us is to-
Hang on him a second. Let him finish his question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. It sounds like I'm, I'm out of order. I'm-
Okay. We're, we're, pardon me. We divided the question-
Right.
Taking them one at a time.
Okay.
And we're on the Customs House Museum reduction of three hundred thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Okay. So we did not vote?
We have not yet voted on that question.
I thought we voted on amendment and then divided it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's been a long afternoon. Okay. So back to, back to Councilman Brown, you're, please restate your amendment to the amendment.
So my amendment would be to change it from the three hundred thousand eighty-eight dollars to a one hundred thousand dollar reduction in their budget, which will be about ten percent of their budget instead of the thirty percent reduction.
Okay. You've heard the motion for the amendment, the Brown Amendment to the, to the question of the-
Point of order.
Point of order.
Why are we not voting on the Customs House Ward one amendment?
We, we voted to divide the question, which is taking each one of these three items individually. Am I, am I right, Mr. Bittner? I'm sorry. So to restate, we are voting, we voted to divide the question, which is the Zacharias Amendment.
But he made his amendment.
But we had, we had a motion to divide the question. Instead of, instead of eliminating the Customs House Museum reduction, the motion was made by Councilman McLaughlin to divide the question into three. So we're voting on each one of those individually.
Yes, but prior to her doing that, he made his amendment that we printed out that we have not voted on yet.
Which is, we're taking his amendment, which was divided into three.
No.
Yes.
I think I see the, yeah.
Okay.
Did you amend the amendment?
So we, Councilman Zacharias made the motion to amend the McLaughlin, or your amendment- the question into three. So, we're voting on each one of those individually.
Yes, but prior to her doing that, he made his amendment that we printed out that we have not voted on yet.
Which is, we're taking his amendment, which was divided into three?
No.
Yes. Okay.
Did you amend the amendment?
So, we, Councilman Zacharias made the motion to amend the McLaughlin, or your amendment, excuse me.
Correct.
To eliminate the Customs House Museum from your reduction.
Yes, and we have not voted on that. Now, he's trying to amend his amendment to my amendment, and we...
Then the motion. Mr. Bittner, if you don't mind.
Yes.
This is the, this is the worst kind of electrical diagram you could imagine. Mr. Bittner, please correct me.
Okay, so the way I was tracking this was, we, Councilman Zacharias did his amendment to the amendment, which was then split into three questions. So, then we were going to vote those three questions. We're already on the amendment to the amendment, which limits it to two, so then Council, Councilman Browns would wait until we deal with Councilman Zacharias' amendment to the amendment.
Everybody understand that?
In three parts.
You restate that for the senior citizens in the...
Yes, we should, I think the way I tracked it, we should handle Zach, excuse me, Councilman Zacharias' amendment to the amendment in three different questions, because it was split three different ways, prior to the time that we allow Councilman Brown to do his amendment.
Okay, everybody tracking? Thank you, Councilman Lovato, for straightening it out. Councilman Brown, we'll come back to you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're, we're on the, we're on the question of the Customs House Museum reduction. Councilman McLaughlin, do you wish to be recognized on that?
No, sorry.
Okay, that's, don't apologize, all right. Okay. We're now voting on the question of the reduction of the Customs House Museum by the $30888? Are we, are we square? No? Hang on a second. I'm sorry. Zero. Oh, to eliminate the reduction. Okay. Everybody, everybody understand but me? All right? Okay. Everybody know what we're voting on? Somebody explain it, all right? Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Six yes, five no, one abstain.
All right, it passes whatever it was. Okay. All right. All right, let me, let me make sure I'm getting it right here. Mr. Bittner, help me out here. Phone a friend. So, we're now on question two, which is the reduction of the Senior Center by $44,000. Everybody square? Anybody wish to be recognized on that question? Councilman McLaughlin, on that question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I appreciate trying to reduce spending 200%, but a lot of the people that visit the Senior Center wouldn't eat if they didn't have the Senior Center. There are so many challenges there that they have added dinners for, for the low-income people. And I remember during the budget presentation, the director talked about how she took a lower director rate because her mission was about getting the Senior Center up and running. So, she's the lowest-paid director out of all of the nonprofits that receive funding from us by, I think, $45,000, $50,000. So, I would not be in favor of reducing the Senior Center's funding.
Councilman Streetman on the Senior Center funding reduction.
Yes, sir, I agree with the previous speaker. I went for their open house here just recently. It's wonderful food that they fix there, and I would encourage any of our seniors out there that are in need of a place to go, as well as to be able to get some, you know, additional meals. That's a wonderful place to be able to do it, and I too, with dinners being something they've just recently added, this would eliminate it right back out of there, and they are trying to grow the number of people that they're able to serve in our community. So, I too, like I said, I, this one is one I'll have to vote against.
Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Reducing their budget is not a slight at the services that they provide. Yes, it is much needed in our community, but these organizations need to find other sources of revenue, and if we keep giving them the same amounts and the same increases year over year, they're not working to be self-sufficient. Now, I commend the Senior Center and the director for taking her pay cut, but it doesn't stop there. We need to do more funding, fundraising, and we need to find other sources of revenue for them. That's all I have, thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding the question of reducing the Senior Center funding? Seeing none, hearing none, are we ready to vote on question two, which is the reduction of the Senior Center by the $44,000? All members, please cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Five yes, seven no, zero abstain.
Motion fails. We're now on the third question of the Human Relations Commission reducing their funding by $24,000, $28,400. Do I hear a motion in a second? Motion improperly seconded. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized on this question.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the sponsor on this. When she first started speaking, and when this was a whole thing, she was absolutely correct, and when this was presented to us, we had a lot of "to be determined, to be determined, to be determined." So, I absolutely support her amendment to the budget in regards to this one.
All right, any more comment or question regarding this question? We're voting to reduce the Human Relations Commission funding in the amount of $28,400, new budget of $21,600. All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eleven yes, one no, zero abstain.
That reduction passes. All right, Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, my next amendment is for two of our city departments reducing the budget for building and maintenance and reducing the budget for building and codes. That is my motion.
Before, before we move on, Mr. Bittner's giving me that look. Oh, we got to go back, we got to go back. Man, we were this close. Okay, we've divided the question, we've voted on all three questions, now we have to go back and vote on the amendment with those items that have been approved. Okay. Mr. Bittner, would you go to the microphone, please, sir, and tell us which ones that have been approved, so we'll know what the heck we're voting on, or I will.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amended amendment, which took out the $30888, and then the Senior Center, believe that failed, and then the HRC budget passed. So, we're voting on the amended amendment, which would be the new budget of $21,600, and removing the Customs House Museum from the amendment of Lovato. Tracking.
Everybody know what we're voting on? Okay, Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized on this amendment.
Senior moment, point of clarification. So, essentially, the only thing we're voting on is the HRC funding, since the one, the Senior Center reduction failed and the museum was pulled out. So, essentially, we're just voting on the decree, okay, thank you.
Correct, correct. Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
So, I'm just trying to figure out where my amendment would have went, since it, for the Customs House Museum, because we voted on taking it off, you know, off of this resolution, I guess.
Just, just for clarification, we voted not to reduce.
Right.
Right, okay.
And so, you know, I was going to propose an amendment to that, to change it from $300,000 to $100,000, so now we went to zero, where would I propose mine to...
Have to be a separate amendment, have to be a separate amendment in writing to reduce the funding to the Customs House Museum by $100,000, correct?
But since we voted to go to zero, it'd be to reduce it by $100,000.
If that's your intent. All right, if you'll give that to...
See if this is correct. Right. Right. Yes.
Okay, hang on a second, let's get...
Let's get some clarification. It's still a decrease on their overall budget.
So, we're, the motion made by Councilman Brown is to, is to decrease the funding... Hold what you got.
We did that. Yeah, it was... Earlier.
Calculator.
Okay, let me, let me just kind of interrupt this high-level discussion here. You can't amend, amend an amendment to an amendment.
Right.
So, we, we've already amended the Lovato Amendment with the Zacharias Amendment, so we're at the limit of what we can do for that amendment, for her amendment. You would have to come back with a separate amendment to reduce funding. Unless the Zacharias Amendment fails, and then you could come in with your amendment. You got it?
We, we already voted on that, so that takes one amendment away.
Okay, hang on, Mr. Bittner. I apologize. We were bumping along pretty good here.
The split into three, and then we were going to vote on the amended amendment. So, we haven't voted on the whole thing put together.
Right.
So, we'll vote on that. If it fails, we'll go back to the Lovato Amendment.
Her original amendment.
Her original.
We voted on his amendment to take it to zero.
I, I think you've split it into three questions to approve it, and then you vote on the amended amendment, which is the first amendment, with those changes added to it through the second amendment. So, then you got to vote on that to pass it. If it fails, then you go back to the original ordinance, or the ordinance as amended the first time, which could be amended the second time, again.
So, we have an amendment to the amendment, which is Councilman Zacharias' amendment.
That's correct.
And we have to vote on that.
Correct.
Once we vote on that, if it fails, then we back to the Lovato Amendment without any amendments to it, and then Councilman Brown could jump in.
Correct.
But if it passes, then we can't, then, then what happens?
According to Roberts Rules, an amendment to the third degree is not permitted. So, to accomplish same person, same purpose, a member can say, while secondary amendment is pending, which is that one, if voted down, Councilman Brown would offer his secondary amendment, which everybody knows about now. So, if he passes, then I think he could come back before our second reading next week with his amendment.
Okay. Okay. Questions for Mr. Bittner on the posture of this, of this amendment? Councilman Streetman, you're recognized on, to Mr. Bittner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. We voted on the amendment, so that, at least the question one, has already been amended, because that was what we had to vote on when it first came up. Then we voted on question two, then we voted on question three. Question one was already amended. To zero.
Question one was amended to zero.
Question one was amended to zero.
She split it into three parts, correct?
The whole thing was split into three parts. So, we voted to amend question one, and really the amendment wasn't necessary then because we were already in a question. That's what's throwing everything here, or that, because we're in it, we were in a question. But question one was amended to zero. Then we voted on question two, which, question two failed. Then we voted on question three, question three passed. So, I, I'm guessing that what, for one thing, that probably we did miss, is that we needed to vote on it as a whole after all the questions. I guess you have to bring them together.
Correct, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
But that's already been, that part's already been amended. So, the question as a whole is just the HRC budget being reduced now to, I handed my sheet off, being reduced down to $21,600. So, that's all that's left of it.
That's all that's left, but that's the amendment as amended.
Right, but so it is still, I mean, it's, it's been amended.
So, the question is, can Councilman Brown offer his amendment to this amended amendment? Because there's only one active amendment in place now.
Exactly.
Yes. But you haven't voted on Councilman Zacharias' amended amendment.
Yes, sir, we did. We voted on that. That's what brought it to zero.
Well, we, we divided the question into three. First one passed to bring it to zero, second one failed, third one passed, but did we ever vote on his amendment in total? And the clerk and the attorney says no, so just for sake, clarity's sake, we need to vote on the Zacharias Amendment now that we've take, addressed the three issues.
Correct.
Okay, so just for clarity, let's, let's go back and pick up the Zacharias Amendment that has been amended. Everybody understand? So, we're only really voting, we're voting to take, to take, to reduce the HRC budget to $21,600.
Correct.
And that's the extent of his amendment.
Correct.
It survived. Everybody good? Everybody know? Councilman Lovato, no?
No, I strongly disagree with the definition that we're using for what the third, the third-party amendments. Like, I understand if he makes an amendment to my amendment, Councilman Brown can't amend that. But if his amendment passes or fails, someone else can still bring another amendment forward, and that is what Councilman Brown is doing, and we're not allowing him to do that.
We will, go ahead, Mr. Bittner, we will allow Councilman Brown, we're going to need to dispose of Councilman Zacharias' amendment now that we've voted on the three parts. We'll dispose of that either up or down, and then we'll go to Councilman Brown for his amendment to your amendment as amended.
Correct, so you can't go into the third degree until we finish off.
Right.
Councilman Zacharias' amendment, and then, then we can move on to Councilman Brown.
Yeah, the chair rules that he can then introduce his amendment to your amendment.
So, we don't go into the third degree of the amendment.
So, we're not at the third degree yet, because we still have to dispose of Zacharias' amendment. Everybody good? Okay, Councilman Zacharias on this issue?
Mayor, I was just going to try to offer a, an explanation that, I don't know, I thought might make, might make sense.
You're recognized, you got four.
So, so here's what, what has happened. We had an amendment, I proposed an amendment to that amendment. Had we voted on that first, we would then divide the question, and then we would have been dividing on each line individually. But because that motion was made before we voted on my amendment, what has happened is, through dividing the question, my amendment has been amended. So, now my current amendment is what I think some people may have thought we were voting on as the final thing. If this next vote fails, my amendment, having been amended by the, the dividing of the question, fails, and we're back to the original.
Everybody clear? Councilman McLaughlin on, for clarity?
For sanity's sake, would you please redefine what your amendment was?
Yes, after the votes on, on the divided question, my amendment will decrease the Customs House Museum budget by zero. It will decrease the Senior Center budget by zero, and it will decrease the HRC budget by $28,400.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're good. Everybody else good? So... So. After this vote, then I will come to Councilman Brown, who has an amendment to the Lovato amendment. All right? We're voting on the Zacharias amendment as amended. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Six yes, five no, zero abstain.
Okay, passes. Councilman Brown, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, after going through all that and thinking about that, and looking at previous numbers, I'd like to propose an amendment to the Custom House Museum to dec, decrease an additional sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, because we took twenty, thirty-one thousand in a earlier vote. So this would make the total of be a hundred thousand, but on this amendment, the Custom House Museum decreased of sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, you heard the motion, do I hear a second? Properly second, any discussion about this amendment? Okay, are you ready to vote? Hang on a second. Yeah, let's get a copy, I'm sorry. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you pass that down? Make sure you see it. Now that's another question. I printed, I did it in print. All right, everybody got a copy of the Brown amendment to the amended amendment? Councilman Brown, will you restate it one more time?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, so we look to decrease the Customs House Museum budget by sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay. You've heard the explanation, it's properly before us. This is, this is an amendment to the amended amendment? Any questions? Are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eight yes, four no, zero abstain.
All right, the amendment to the amended amendment passes. Okay, we're now back on the Lovato amendment as amended. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized for final thoughts?
That's, that concludes my report.
Concludes her report. All right, we're on the Lovato amendment as amended. All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Ten yes, one no, one abstain.
The amendment is adopted. Councilman Lovato, any further amendments?
I do, I have one more. Um, this one is a, um, a reduction for building and maintenance, and a reduction for building and codes, and that is my motion.
Motion been made and properly seconded in favor of this amendment, if you would, please offer an explanation.
Um, so, the first one, um, for building and maintenance, it is a reduction of three hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, this, um, I did not list out line items, um, but essentially this would remove the funding for their new staff, new, um, new requested vehicles, and other, you know, optional services that they are providing. Um, for building and codes, the reduction is two hundred and one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, and this is, um, the amount that it would take for two of their requested enforcement officers and their admin in the correlating vehicles. Um, just to head this off, I understand that this is going to reduce the services that they can provide to the city, um, but right now we have citizens with tarps still on their roofs, because they can't afford their deductible to get their roof fixed. Um, we have citizens who are going without their auto insurance, because they're having to make the difficult decision between putting gas in their car and paying for their auto insurance, so when we're looking at the tax rate and trying to reduce that, some of our well-intentioned wants need to be put off until the state of our national and state-level economy can, can catch up. So that's my explanation.
Councilman McLaughlin, on the amendment?
Make a motion to divide the question before it's amended.
Motion been made and properly seconded to divide the question of the two, of the two items on the Lovato amendment. Uh, any question regarding the motion to divide? Seeing none, okay, we're voting to divide the question into two votes before it's amended. All right, all members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Ten yes, one no, one abstain.
Okay, the motion to divide passes, we are now voting, we're now discussing the first item is building and maintenance reduction, but in the amount of three hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars. Any comment or question regarding that line? Or that amount? Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Yes, I actually have a, um, I guess a point of clarification, under their budget, building and maintenance has a line item stating property taxes on city-owned, non-city-use property. And my question is, why are we paying taxes on buildings that we're not using, but we have for-profit businesses using? Why are they not paying their taxes? Why are we paying their taxes? And then, why, and then the second part is, for the other portions of that, that it's property that we've obtained through taxes that were not paid for, why are we paying that? It's, that seems circular to pay taxes with taxes.
Okay, that question is so simple, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mata to come up. Ms. Mata, thank you.
It is actually pretty simple, so, before all of us were here, um, there was a lease agreement per, um, approved by city council with the Marina and the Liberty Park Grill. So that property, they're private entities, and in those lease agreements, it's a ground lease, we own the ground that they're on, they own the buildings. At the end of the lease, the buildings change hands and stuff, but, um, because it's in our name, we're the owner of the property. So when the leases were approved, it was approved saying that the tenants would not pay any property taxes. That language is in there, regardless of if it's ever assessed or not assessed, they're not responsible for property taxes. After we signed those lease agreements and everything was approved and the buildings were built, and operational, um, there was a new assessor, and she's following the rules. She has done absolutely nothing wrong, the rules say, if it's leased by a private entity, it gets taxed at the leasehold value. Um, we actually, um, tried to argue that point, tried to push that it was serving a, um, a municipal purpose by having a Marina for use of the citizens, the docks, we tried to push all that to have the taxes not be applied to us, and we did not win that one. Um, so we are required to pay those taxes, and we've tried to negotiate with the tenants, and they will not budge, so they have to be paid, we don't have an option.
How long is the lease?
Uh, I think they're twenty-year leases. Um, but, and then there's options to renew, um, both parties have to agree, though, at the end of the leases. I believe they're twenty years, we'd have to double-check them, but that's my memory.
Other questions, Councilman Markey? Or Ms. Mata?
The other portion of, of properties that we would receive mid-year, that we have, um, that the taxes were not paid for.
So there, and then there's also, I forgot to tell you, um, US Bank is the other one. So we leased this building, again, um, part of City Hall, is leased to US Bank, and it became the same situation based on the square footage that US Bank is. They have to, um, we have to pay the taxes on that. So if we acquire land that, um, that some taxes were owed on, ultimately they're gonna have to be paid if we don't collect them at time of closing. We've had really good luck with our new city attorney to make sure that that's happening at closing, that the other entities are paying it and we're holding it. But it's still an expense on our side, because once the tax bill gets, um, presented to us, it has to be paid. So we got the money through the sale of the property, but then we have to actually pay them, so it's a revenue and an expense. It's an accounting thing, you have to show the expense side.
All right, I just, I guess that doesn't really click in my head, because we're, we're operating on taxes, and therefore, because the taxes were paid, we're using taxes to pay the taxes, I guess it's where I'm not really understanding.
So we don't get the opportunity to change our taxes, we do not, well, it's the only thing that you council can do is set a tax rate. We are not involved in the assessing of ta, appraised values or assessments on the land. We cannot change the tax rule, it's, we're not allowed to. The tax rule can only be changed by the, um, elected official for the assessor's office. She can tell us, send us a change of, um, assessment. That's the only way it can get changed, so if it comes on that as tax assessment rule, we have to bill it and it has to be paid, otherwise it goes up for tax sale. Am I correct?
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will get to you in a minute, you, you're on the list, I got you. Councilman McLaughlin for Ms. Mata, or just in general?
In general.
Okay, thank you.
But.
Go ahead and we'll get to him, and she's not far.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna step back for the people that had questions for her.
You go right ahead.
Go ahead and ask my question, if it's not for her, okay. Um, in keeping with what some of the other council members have done, um, did we want the director of building and maintenance to come forward and explain how this would affect the budget, what would have to be reduced?
I think it'd be prudent to do that. Mr. Palmore? Without objection? Please, if you wouldn't mind, answer the question about the reduction and its impact on your budget.
So, as you know, counsel, um, I've also taken over a portion of municipal properties, I've been switched over six hundred thousand dollars of that budget. Um, I've already reduced my budget by five percent, and then that budget was also reduced. If we're gonna talk about taking away three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars or so of my budget, we're gonna start cutting into, uh, new employees. We have grown a lot as a city, uh, my maintenance covers, uh, a hundred-plus facilities, um, and we, uh, have people on staff that, they need support to get that done, PMs, uh, asset management, things of that nature. Um, also, when it comes to vehicles, um, I spoke about this during my budget meeting, that my forester does not have four-wheel drive, and she only has a normal truck, and we have issues with her during the winter months and some of the rainy months, getting stuck in areas that she is currently kind of planting trees or whatnot, so it would be a huge, I mean, impact to my budget of three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
Councilman McLaughlin?
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Palmore. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
I, uh, just asking, did you, as a sponsor, I, I think you talked about these during the committee meeting, did you reach out and talk to the director prior to this, just to find out more in detail about his budget?
Attempts were made to reach out to that director.
Okay, so you did. And you discussed this in, some of these also in the committee meeting, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
Okay, because I know I can remember if I was, I was almost positive you brought those up in that one, thank you.
Now, Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor.
For Ms. Mata? Ms. Mata, without objection? Councilman Brown?
So, back on those taxes, most of those are county taxes that we're having to pay.
County and city.
So we have to pay ourselves also, but
Correct.
Part of that is taxes that we have to pay to the, to the county that doesn't make a circle.
Absolutely correct, yeah, we have to pay both city and county taxes on those properties.
So the city taxes pretty much just almost wash themselves out.
Exactly, because we bill it and we pay it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just the county taxes that is excess than normal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mata. Any more comment or question regarding this question of the building and facility maintenance budget amendment? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? We're voting on just that one item to reduce the building and facility maintenance budget. Every member, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Four yes, eight no, zero abstain.
Motion fails, we're now on the second question of reducing the building and codes budget by two hundred one thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars, any comment or question regarding that? Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
My comments from the previous attempt to cut the building and codes budget stand. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Lovato, any, any words for that? Okay.
No, that's all.
All right. We're now voting on the question regarding the reduction of the building and codes department budget. All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Four yes, eight no, zero abstain.
Motion fails. We're now on the amendment that has nothing in it, right? Mr. Bittner?
Yeah, it failed.
Okay, so it failed, all right. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized, additional amendments?
Uh, that's all, thank you.
All right, that's all, all right. Any other amendments? Seeing none, any other discussion regarding ordinance ninety-seven? Councilman McLaughlin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just need to make a statement that my husband is a city employee, and that when I vote on the city general budget, it's for the best interest of the citizens of Clarksville, and not my family in a personal capacity.
Councilman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, um, uh, same thing, uh, my, uh, my son is a Parks and Rec, uh, employee, but I am too casting my vote, uh, based on what I think is in the best interest of the city, thank you.
Thank you, any other comment or question regarding ordinance ninety-seven as amended? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted, any member wish to change their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Five yes, seven no, zero abstain.
Ordinance fails, we're now on the resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-four twenty-five, a resolution accepting the public improvement program for fiscal years twenty-six through twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty, excuse me, compiled by the City of Clarksville, reviewed by the Clarkson Montgomery County Regional Planning Commission. I will call on Mr. Tindall, please, sir, if you wouldn't mind. Well, let me get a motion and a second first. Motion been made and properly seconded, and Mr. Tindall, please.
Thank you, Mayor, I was just confirming with Ms. Mata that even though the budget did not pass, this is just your capital improvements program plan, it is not hinged on the budget, is not influenced the budget, is a planning tool. Um, some cities, some counties, some jurisdictions around the country maybe have a local one-cent sales tax or a capital, uh, bond that they did, uh, the city does not currently have that, so our capital improvement plan, uh, that is presented to, from the city to the planning commission, we reviewed it and we're sending it back to you. Um, it's been reviewed and accepted, uh, is a wish list, uh, for the next five years, it gives the city a, um, a gauge of those projects that are on the more near term and on the longer term, if, for instance- If, for instance, you had a set funding of 10 or 100 million a year of capital projects, then you would plan out that further out. But the way the city currently budgets, it's the projects that are most needed rise to the top annually, but this is a list of projects so that we're not always calling for projects. It's constantly evaluated every year. So we present that to you in the form of a resolution for planning purposes.
All right, you've heard the explanation. Any comment or question? Are you ready to vote on Resolution Number 63? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Eleven yes, one no, zero abstain.
Resolution 63 is adopted. Next item is public comment. We allow three people five minutes each. If you wish to address the council, we encourage you to come forward. Please come forward. Give us your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Kelly Snyder. I have spent the last 25 years in the mental health field, and I've been a licensed professional counselor with mental health service provider designation since 2016.
Will you pull your microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a little better?
That's better.
All right. I also specialize in trauma therapy. Today, I'm not standing here as a therapist, and today, I'm not just a voting citizen trying to talk to you. I'm here as someone who has lived a lifetime surrounded by people who serve, and I've felt the weight they carry, seeing what stress, trauma, and endless sacrifice do to a person's spirit over time. I'm the proud wife of a firefighter, 25 years by his side, 26. I'm also the stepmother, a cousin, and niece of firefighters, and I'm a proud Army brat. Service runs deep in my blood, but so does the heartache that often follows it. I've spent a life surrounded by people who serve. I've seen firsthand the toll that serving others, especially in high-risk, high-stress roles, can take on someone's mind, body, and family. It is not just professional for me, it's very personal. I know what it means to live with someone who runs into danger for a living and what it looks like when they carry the weight of those calls into our home. Let me share what it looks like here in Clarksville. Last year, Clarksville firefighters responded to nearly 20,000 calls, according to CFR's website, 19,851 to be exact. And despite what most people assume, only about 2% of those were fires. Over 70% were medical emergencies. That means they're first on the scene for cardiac arrest, car crashes, overdoses, suicides, and the unthinkable when children don't make it. These calls don't disappear when the truck pulls away. They stay, they replay, and they compound. Okay. Let me put this in human terms. You start your shift at eight, 7:30 if you're doing the right thing. By nine, you're already responding to a car wreck. By 9:30, you're holding someone's hand as they take their final breath. Then, like nothing happened, you're expected to go back into a training that the call interrupted, or pick up the phone and talk to your child that you haven't seen since bedtime last night, and you won't see until the dinner tomorrow because after your shift, you have to go to your second job. Not for extra spending money, we don't have that. It's because we don't make enough to live comfortably. This is what's different about Clarksville firefighters here. They're expected to do more for less. So our department seems underpaid compared to others in Tennessee. You've seen the numbers, I'm not gonna repeat them. Most of our firefighters are raising families on government assistance, you heard this, renting instead of owning, commuting long distances, working second, sometimes third jobs because their life-saving job doesn't pay enough. What that means is they have no space to recover from what they're experiencing. They have no time to process their trauma. They have no ability to rest, no access to mental health care without the added stress of taking a day off of that second or third job. As a therapist, I can tell you, this is a dangerous, dangerous formula. It's a recipe for burnout. It's a pipeline for depression, anxiety, emotional numbness, insomnia, and worse, suicide. Nationally, more firefighters die by suicide in the line of duty. That alone should stop us in our tracks. The mental load becomes unbearable. I've seen it in my office and at my kitchen table. There's silent suffering that they go through. They don't want to be weak. They don't want to be seen as bringing the pain home. They hold it in, they push it down, they go on to the next shift, the next job, the next birthday party. You can only stack trauma so high before something cracks. And the weight doesn't stay at work, it follows them home. It shows up in their sleep or their lack thereof, in their nightmares, their short tempers, the distance from their families, chronic headaches, high blood pressure, physical exhaustion that no amount of caffeine or courage can fix. Over time, that emotional burden doesn't just chip away at their well-being, it erodes their entire quality of life. Too often, they're expected to carry that weight alone. So even with all this pressure, our firefighters show up, they've completed training hours, they do maintenance work orders, they do inspections, they install smoke detectors because protecting the city is personal to them. Here's the truth, is we're running them into the ground. We're exhausting their minds, their bodies, their families, and then we're asking them for more. So I'm here today not as a mental health professional alone, but as someone who lives this life beside them, someone who watches the toll it takes. And I want to ask you, how long would you carry someone else's trauma before it broke you? Our firefighters don't need more praise, they don't need another "thank you for your service." They need time to recover, they need time to go home and sleep, to pay...
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen? Give us your name, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Melissa Lindsay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm a teacher, and I'm a member of Clarksville Montgomery County Education Association. And as a member of CMCEA, I'm a part of the team that collaborates teacher salaries with the school district. I felt led to speak up about firefighter pay because I see similarities between the professions. We're both underpaid public employees, even though we are vital to the community and we're hard to replace. One of the key components I address with the school district is the salary of teachers in surrounding counties. When any of those counties raise teacher salaries, CMCSS also raises our salaries in order to stay competitive. That's not happening in the City of Clarksville with firefighter raises. Right now, our firefighters have their pick of places where they could make higher salaries, but they choose to stay here. When I asked for the starting salary of firefighters, I was shocked to hear $43,000 and some change. These brave men and women run into burning buildings. They console people who've lost their loved ones. They carry teddy bears for children who've lost their family members and pets. They try to sleep with visions that hopefully most of us will never have to see. $43,000 and some change. And I understand that they're getting a raise like other public employees, but that raise will be approximately $100 a month for those starting firefighters. It hasn't been long ago that Clarksville, Tennessee was lauded as the best place to live in the country by Money.com. How can we say that we're one of the best places to live if we do not have the best public services like the fire department? And how can we have the best fire department and we do not pay the best people to serve? I listened to a firefighter the other day at a press conference. She moved here, like a lot of other people have moved to Clarksville, because she thought that it would provide a better place to live, a better way to live. To live in a safe area, she and other firefighters have to have two jobs, as we've just heard, sometimes three. Her family member had to drop out of college to help pay the bills. They've had to sell many of their possessions. Will $100 a month allow that family member to go back to college? I also asked what type of step-pay plan firefighters had because I hope that maybe the starting salary was low, but that they had steady increases like teachers do. Again, I was shocked to hear that they don't have a structured step-pay plan. Teachers have one because experience in the classroom is valued. I'm a much better teacher than I was when I started 30 years ago, and my experience is valued. Are firefighters not valued for that same experience? If your house catches on fire, would you not hope that firefighters putting out the blaze had experience? They don't get bonuses, they don't get education support. If other cities can figure out how to pay their firefighters more, then why can't we? I know that, you know, just in listening to all of you talk and try to cut money wherever you can, I understand to just a small degree, after listening tonight, how hard it is to find the funds. And I know that you want to do better, and I know that you want to serve this community to the best of your ability. And so when I say these things, I'm not trying to be critical of you as people. I can't ima, I don't have to worry about the budget. I don't know how to make the cuts. But what I do know is that we're expecting firefighters to give their lives, but we cannot, but we are not paying them enough to live. And I think we can do better. Thank you.
We have room for one more person wishes to address the council? Seeing none, the purpose for which this special session in the Clarksville City Council haven't been accomplished, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Without objection, we adjourn. Sorry, sir, we adjourn.